All right, welcome everybody to tonight's regular scheduled city council meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. It's February 6th, 2024, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll have Barb read the clerk's open meeting statement for us tonight.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
You want to also take a role for us?
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra. Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker. Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dmitri Martin?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Seven present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Barb, and you want to start the introductions of the department heads also?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
You're next.
Thank you, Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Matt Clatt, Airport Manager.
Jan Rodemacher sitting in for Eric.
Jared Kivela, Community Economic Development.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Wes Zubi, Sergeant, Opaquah Police Department.
Thanks Wes, and Josh is in the back, of course, so we know he's in attendance tonight. I'm watching these guys play games again tonight here, so let's get going here. Consent agenda, you have in front of you the consent agenda. These are items that we vote on with one motion. Unless you see something on there that you would like to see moved from that agenda to the regular agenda. If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve, second.
Ooh, that was good. Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, regular agenda. Barb tells me there's nothing extra, so what you see on your agenda is what you're going to get. So again, we would just need a motion to approve.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Nagel, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Announcements and correspondence, we have public input. Anybody that would like to give public input on a non-agenda item? Please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes or less. Any... Paul, go ahead.
Every year I try and better what I do the previous year for my wife's birthday. She's working in the library today, so happy birthday Linda.
Very nice of you, brownie points, Paul, good job. Okay. Anybody else? Public input. All right, let's go ahead and move on to new business. You'll notice that we're doing new business before old business tonight, but that's the direction that we'd like to go tonight. So we're going to discuss the development agreement between the City of Opaquah and Tykor Built LLC. And this is for our Phase 1 of our River North project. And I'm going to have Aaron go ahead and set this up and introduce the guys that are here tonight for that.
All right, thank you Mayor Smith. Good evening, City Council members. On page 53 of your city council packet, you will see a memo that kind of outlines and summarizes the development agreement. Attached to that memo is the development agreement with some exhibits. And in addition to that, in a few minutes, you'll see Wade and Alex from Tykor Built LLC give a presentation with a little more detail on the proposed development within River North. A little background, in December of 2022, the city, we entered into a development agreement with Hoffman Development Group, or HDG as we referred to them, for 120-unit multifamily development. That was south of Godfrey Drive within River North. The intent of that was obviously to provide housing, but was also to kind of be the catalyst for the increment to be kicked off in the TID, TID 11, to help support Phase 1 infrastructure that would support single-family. You'll see tonight that this new proposed Phase 1 actually has both apartment complexes and the infrastructure and the single-family homes surrounding that. We did release in of, we had a release of that agreement in December when they did not meet some financing deadlines that were a part of that agreement, and they were working on an extension at that time. So, once that happened, Tykor, who we had been talking about with some interest in single-family, once that parcel became available, they expressed interest in also developing apartments on that complex that was previously tied up in the former development agreement. So here we are tonight. Just a few brief, I guess, outlines of what we're going to be talking about. So Tykor is going to be proposing the construction of 32 new single-family homes in the River North area as a part of Phase 1. Construction of 124 multifamily units, which would be approximately $27.9 million of value added upon completion of Phase 1. If Tykor is successful in Phase 1, they'll also have the first option to secure land for future phases. And success for the purpose of this development agreement will be measured by the completion of their commitments tied to both the public infrastructure and hitting a mark of $10 million of value added by January 1st, 2026. If all options are exercised, and if Tykor does develop this entire River North area to their current plan, it'd be about 358 housing units in total and approximately $69 million of value. Conservative estimate is to complete this over 10 years, though they could, they believe it could be built out sooner, depending on how things go. Couple other comments, I just wanted to say I did reach out. Tykor has recently completed projects in a couple of different municipalities. Jared and I were actually able to go and visit one, or more than one, a few, in Howard. We were able to see their product firsthand. I was able to talk to some village managers and city managers, both in the Village of Howard and City of O'Connell Falls. Both had very positive things to say about what Tykor has done in their communities and their ability to execute on what they had committed to. Tykor is asking for a pay-go incentive, which you'll see the details of in the presentation. And they are committing to financing and constructing all the public infrastructure, which was a real positive for us as we worked back and forth in negotiations. So with that, I guess the only thing I'll say, we also have Adam Reichel in the audience. Adam's with Baird. We have worked with both Baird and attorney Steve Sorenson in drafting the development agreements and the pro formas. And Adam's here to go over the pro forma and then answer any questions council may have. So, without further ado, Wade and Alex, the floor is all yours. I will switch it over to your presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I'm assuming that's working and you can hear me. Well, it's been not a long time, but we put a lot of time into working through Adam, the team, and of course, the mayor. So, we want to present to you our ideas of what we're proposing on the site. And if you want to start that, Alex. So, a little bit about what we've done. And you spoke with some of the places that we've done a lot of business in over the last few years. But Tykor was established in 2002. And even before that, I was deeply involved in new construction and selling new construction. And what it evolved into is we started doing it ourselves because we found some of the attention to detail with some of the builders that were out there in our particular area, and customer service just was lacking. So we actually just went out in 2002 and started doing it all ourselves. So, we've built over 1,000 properties. It was a little hard to come up with that number because I think it's quite a bit more than that, but 1,000 is a good number. We currently, right now, with all the other developments that we have going on, we have about 500 lots under development in first phases. So, we're spread out with Pulaski, Howard, Luxembourg, Combined Locks, and a few other areas that encompass that. And currently, which you're going to see samples of all this, but currently we've got also about 500, what we call town home apartments under development in the first phases also. So, this is something that we eat, sleep, and breathe every day, and have done a lot of it. The big thing that has been a hot ticket in all of these communities that we're involved in is everybody is talking about workforce housing. And it doesn't mean, you know, low or affordable, it's workforce housing. It's so that the employers can hire more people. Sheboygan County's doing it, Door County's doing it, Howard's going to be doing it. There's a real need for being able to provide a really good product for the families that are working in the community at a really good price. And I'm going to show you how we came up with this, working with the team here. So, there's a study that everybody kind of goes by. And we looked at your, I think it was Bowen report that you provided us. And we, it's kind of like the first step for us to say, okay, is this really needed in these communities? So we kind of have a checks and balances system we go through. And that Bowen National Report told us a couple of things. First of all, less than 15% of the residential units here have been built since 2000. So in 24 years, 15% of your inventory has been built, and less than 2% or around 2% has been built in the last 10 years. So there's definitely a need. And the next factor that you go to is that, which I should have started with, I'm sorry, is the 1.91 jobs to housing units. That number typically in those reports should reflect between 1.3 and 1.5. Now, what that equates to, in some quick math, is there's somewhere between 5 and 800 units that could be built in this marketplace. Now, the question always is, what product, right? What units are needed? So that's where we dig a little bit deeper into this, and I'll show you in a second. But the key to all of it is, the biggest demand is in workforce housing. In all of the cities that we are working in currently, and all the ones we've been working in over the last 10 years, that's been the driver for every single community. So we're not talking about, you know, McMansion-type houses. This is the houses that everyone can purchase and buy. And we have a lot of different, exciting ways to kind of make that happen, which I'm going to share with you. So, the way that this can happen, to create workforce housing, is TID districts. In all of the communities we're in right now, we are working in TID districts. Because that is a way to help drive down the cost to be able to afford to build those houses at the right prices. So we'll give you some examples of that. Ours, as Aaron said, was there's no money being borrowed by the city to create this. It's 100% real pay as you go, meaning we're going to pay to put all the infrastructure in to create these lots and to create those multifamily. This is a map of the River North development. And I want to just point out, in that middle section, you see we kind of left that all blank. And you see a bunch of different colors. And the different colors are different-sized lots. So we look to say, can we get the yield of the lots up? And then, we want to see what sells. So in a lot of these communities that we're in, there are multiple different-sized lots in each phase of the development. So, we don't know until we actually put the product up. What's the hot ticket, right? Is it going to be more luxury apartments? Is it going to be more residential? And then, in that residential, what's the hot ticket? Meaning, is it 1,200 square feet? Is it 1,800 square feet? Is it three-stall garages? Is it two-stall garages? So, when Jared and Aaron came in to visit with us on the one in Howard, that's what we're doing. We have different-sized lots, we have different price points. We hit those price points by having the lots at a certain size and enables us to sell those houses. And just to give you an example, how well this can sometimes go, and there's no guarantee by any means of that this could actually go this fast. But in one of our recent developments in Howard, we built 52 houses in 18 months. It was, there was high, high demand. It was the right product, it was the right price point. So, what we're doing with this, and the reason that area in the middle is open, is I want to show you the next slide. Is because, once we get a feel for the townhomes across and the residential that's happening in, say, Phase 1 and Phase 2, it tells us what you really should be doing in that middle piece. Is it more townhomes because there's high demand? Is it more residential? So if you look at the difference between those two, and you have to, I have to apologize, the one on the bottom left is a really rough sketch that we did very quickly to get it here. And wouldn't, these aren't final designs by any means. But you can see, in one side in the middle, we've said, okay, we need to add more residential because we need more lots. Or, we, you know, we're fine with the lots. I think there's 108 on there with the apartments, showing those apartments on the bottom left. So in that case, if that was what the demand is, then we would come back in future phases and say, here's what we think should go here, and here's why. So, it's a way to approach this in the most successful possible way you can have, right? Leave your options a little open, have good product, see where the demand is going. This is the first phase that we are recommending on, off of Royalton. And this, there was an earlier drawing that moved the entrance down closer to the roundabout. We all talked about that, thought that wasn't a good idea because of the traffic on the roundabout. Move the entrance more into the middle of the block. But these are, this is 32 lots in Phase 1 of the residential. This is primarily the houses that we put up right now. Sometimes I get asked questions about two stories, and yes, we do two stories, but 90% of the houses right now that people want are ranches. You know, we certainly can do two stories, we have plans for two stories, we build two. But this is where the demand is, is in the ranch houses. All of what you will see are full basements, first-floor laundry. You know, we'll go into a little bit of detail. Here are some samples from the Howard area that we just are finishing that is very similar to what the subdivision of Opaquah is like. And then you'll see some houses that are fitting on a little bit narrower lots. And again, this, the draw to these seem to be someone that is moving down in size or newly married or single people are buying those. So it's same thing, the finishes inside are very similar to the other houses. There's really no difference in the quality by any means, or the finishes. It's just a little different design. So, we're doing a lot. We have a lot of this going on, and you have to have a process. And we like to call this, it's customizable, but it's not custom, right? So, it's customizable houses. There are some builders that do what we do that are very strict. It's like, no, that's the house, you can't change anything, that's all you get. Up until the point that the choices cannot be made, you can change anything in these houses as they're being built. So as an example, we go into Phase 1, we would start with six houses immediately. One of those houses will be a model that we will use to show the product and sell off of. And all of the other ones will be for sale. As those sell and get offers, we are starting more houses immediately, right? So, there's always a flow of inventory coming into that subdivision. We don't wait for everything to sell, and we're in a fortunate position that we can do this. So, we will have at any given time, right now, you know, 40 to 50 houses going, somewhere. So, if you look at this, what, it's a turnkey process. That's also an important thing, to make this affordable and easy for people to purchase, which is a lot of builders want people to do construction loans. Ours is a turnkey 100%. You come in and buy it, the day we put the basement in, you close when it's done, you don't have to take out another loan. Everything we do, there's, you know, there's been a reason for it, to make it easy and efficient for people to buy houses. So, the selections can be made based on the progress of the build. So, buyer engages prior to Tykor with the home, will build it as a turnkey. They can select, within the development, in the model, we will have, if Alex, you could just move to that next thing, we have all of this information that's available in that model home. So people can come in, and this is just a small sample of what we have. So people can come in and look at those boards and say, you know what? I like the board B that has the white cabinets. I want that floor plan on that lot. So all of that can happen automatically by a really simple selection sheet process, if you want to go to the next one after that. And that's a selection sheet process. So, people come in, they pick the, I like Lot 13. If they don't want to buy one of the existing houses that are being built, I like Lot 13. There's 20 plans within the model home. They could pick the plan they want, they could pick the lot they want, and they can pick the package that they want. So, the second part of them purchasing the home is the financing. So because we have a lot going on, we have some really great relationships. And those relationships, this happens to be a particular sample of guaranteed rate that we're doing some projects with right now. And because they want to do a lot of business with us, they offer us some pretty attractive things, which is, if you're a buyer and you come in when the basement's in, or midway through, they will lock in your rate that day until you close. If the rates go down, you get the better rate. If the rates go up, you're protected that you're not going to have to pay the higher rate. So they're really going after trying to make this attractive. The other thing is, they have the only program so far that I've seen where as a buyer, to get them into a property or help them qualify for a house, we can buy down the rate a full 1% for the entire locked-in term of the 30-year mortgage. It's a major savings, and what happens is, and rates have gotten better, okay, but they're still not where we need them to be, right? But we can almost like force that to happen in a sale. We can say, hey, the rates are 6.5, the buyers are really interested in 5.5. They don't want to, nor would I necessarily suggest that you go take out a three-year arm. They will come in and we can get them 5.5 locked in for 30 years at a reduced rate, or closing cost. So we have some really, this is just a sample, we have a bunch of these. Our intent is to really engage the community, and I'm going to get to how that happens in a second. But this is an example of a house that would be on a lot, that would be $249,000, brand-new, on the lot, including the lot. And then, we're just going to run through some of these and show you. As you get up into the upper twos, these are what the houses look like, around that 1,400 square feet. And then we get into some larger houses that we put up. And you know, 1,600 square feet, three-car garage. Again, they all have full basements. And the next one, I think, is probably the largest one we're doing right now, which is 1,916 square feet that we can put up on these lots, for, the highest one is $399,000. So, moving across to south of Godfrey. This is the layout that we have. It's going to require a little bit of fill that is going to probably come off the River North. But all of these properties are town home-style apartments. They're higher-end town home-style apartments. So you get a feel for that is a 12-unit, we do 12s, 10s, and 9s. They all have attached garages and separate entrances. So every unit, there's no hall, common big hallways. You walk in your door, you go into your unit, or up the stairs to your unit, and your garage is attached directly to your unit. A lot of them have two-car garages, which is a little uncommon, attached to the unit. And then, on the next one, these are the, this is the back of the building with the patios. And then, this is just a little bit of how we do this. So electric and water is paid by the tenant. Natural gas paid by the landlord, because we have a central boiler system that we put in all the units. There is laundry in each unit separately. High-definition countertops, private entrances, the attached garage I mentioned, full appliance packages, stackable washers and dryers. And potential for additional garage space. Because within that, within that whole development, we will have some extra garages built that people can rent. So if somebody has snowmobiles or a trailer or something, and they want to store it inside, there's extra garages that they can rent. Full onsite management in each location. And that kind of gives you an idea of where we're expecting the rents to be. And that's based on a couple of things, that's based on other places that we're doing this in, and also some of the rent studies that we looked at from Bowen. So, we get it off the ground, right? So, and you guys discussed a little bit about thresholds. And the threshold's become an interesting part, because if you look at that, you know, 22 and 23 is gone. So we're starting, we kind of lost two years on the TID for us to come in. And it still finishes at the exact same time. So, there's just a way, a real need to jumpstart it. So we kind of put in a schedule of being realistic for this year, because we're going to have to put all this infrastructure in this year. We assume we could be starting in July and starting to build, which would be immediately putting up 24 units and six houses, as I mentioned. There will be more happening, but we just really tried to be conservative as we did this. Because we don't want to over-promise and under-produce. But as you go through that, you'll see 2026, we kind of review the values and plan for Phase 2. Well, why are we jumping into that already? Is because it takes a long time, and we have to be ahead of ourselves. So in other words, we don't want to get done with the 32nd lot and say, we should be starting the other phase. We have to start that phase way in advance of us finishing the 32 lots. So we think that '26 is a realistic time to start talking to the city about that second phase. And then, in '27, we're designing and agreeing upon that phase. And then '27, '28, we're starting, we're ready for Phase 2. Because if you look at that build-out schedule, what we think we can do, as we're starting that Phase 2, we're finishing out Phase 1. So this will be a, you know, as long as those sales are happening the way we expect them to, this will be a very fast-moving process, right? We will come in and be talking about putting in the next phase before we're even done with the first phase. But as we discussed in the developers' agreement, we came up with a threshold and said, okay, that's great, you guys want to do that, but, you know, the city came back with, we got to hit a certain number here before we start talking about the next phase, which totally makes sense and is very agreeable. So as we come in, we're already starting to think about what we're going to do next. The other thing that we bring to the table is, we have another company called Realty Hive. And Realty Hive markets properties, actually all over the globe, for developers and realtors all over the globe. We have properties in, I don't even know how many countries right now.
50?
50 countries that are on our site. We were just named in the Number 2 portal for international listings recently. And we have over 800,000 properties on our site that we are currently servicing. So what does that mean for Opaquah, right? That's all nice, Wade, but what the heck does that mean? And what it means is, we have a big reach. And we looked at some other projects that some other communities were doing, and they did a really good job. And they started creating wait lists because they built so much activity for this workforce housing idea. And in one particular community- And in one particular community, there were 276 people on the waiting list to find out information about the properties. Half of those people were from outside the state. So what that tells you is you got to have a reach, right? How did, how did those people find out about it? So when we do this, we're not just like putting up a house, putting a sign up front and putting it in the MLS. Of course, we do that like everyone else. But we take a different approach, and it's bringing people to the community and selling the community as much as the property. So as an example, you guys have done a great job of doing your site. We would partner with that site. We want to be on that site as the, some of the, the new construction housing that's happening in Riverpoint. And also on our end, we're, we're having our, our site connect with your site so that when people want to find out more about Wapaka, and they come to find out about the houses, they're finding out about the community. So it's both ways. And what we do is, number one, we would go to the local industries that are, that we've heard are looking for people, right? This becomes a program with those employers to come and fi, to help find those people. So the first thing we ask the HR department is, where are you looking for people? And where have you been finding them? So what we then do is run ads like this, okay? It's, we put it together pretty quick, but it's a, a nice little ad that would be run in, in the internet, and it's like S, it's SEO, search engine optimization, to get people to see these ads. But we're trying to target who we want to get there. So if we find out, half the people are coming from Appleton, half of them are coming from Stevens Point. We're running ads in those areas to try and get them to say, wow, look at this deal. You can live in Wapaka for as low as $250,000 on the lot, brand-new house. Then what will happen is, of course, the, the stuff like, we're going to engage all the local realtors. So we want all the local realtors to be part of this. In fact, we have an app. Those realtors can go on our app, build a profile, and every lead that comes in from this SEO targeting and these ads goes into that app. And every Realtor then in the community has access to those leads. So it's, it's a very robust way to approach this. And then we've talked about partnering with where we're seeing the traffic from because we can track, this is scary stuff to me, but we can track that you came to our site. We can track, we don't know who you are personally, we don't know exactly where you live, but we know where you're from. So you're from Stevens Point in this zip code. We know that there's people coming in from that. So our idea is to share that with your website so that you can make your website more robust. Because if they're coming there from the houses, then they're coming there because they want to know about Wapaka also. So, and vice versa. If you're getting traffic on your site, we can get in, we can see where the traffic's coming from, we actually know how we should then advertise. So this is a little more than about houses and apartments, but we love, we love talking about this. So we would come in and we would build this kind of kickoff party about what we're doing with all the local realtors, the lenders, the title companies. We want them all involved in this process. This is a really attractive deal for people looking for properties. And then, of course, press releases. We nor, of course, nor, do the normal stuff, MLS, traditional marketing, lawn signs, that kind of stuff. But then it's the website. And just going into that just a hair deeper, we get 2.6 million views on our site, people looking at properties every single year. So, and that's climbing. That went in, that went up 600,000 in six months. So people are coming to the site, they're finding these properties, and we're then tracking those people. So if you came in and you look at a house, one of these houses in Wapaka, you are going to start to see ads in Facebook. You are going to start to see ads when you're doing Google searches, kind of reminding you for a certain period of time, hey, remember you looked at this house in Wapaka, right? So that's pretty common on the internet right now, obviously. But then the ongoing SEO is then to really, like, you got to keep analyzing it to see where you're spending your money, to say, okay, we're getting more response from Stevens Point than anywhere in the world. We need to pour more money into Stevens Point as an example. So that's probably a little more than you wanted to know about advertising. But here's where we are right now. We've gotten through these first four steps with the team here, and we're at now developers' agreement. Any final city approvals on the plans and design? City's going to have to work on that traffic study for that main entrance, just to make sure we don't need any changes in that main entrance. And then at that point, we're moving to break ground in July is what the plan is with the infrastructure. So with that, we're looking for questions.
Thanks, Wade. Nice job. Anybody? Questions?
To what degree do you use local contractors and local businesses?
As much as we can. So we have, you know, long relationships with lumber companies and heating contractors and so forth. You know, we're about an hour away, so they will definitely come here. But what we do is we always get bids, right? So when we start six houses, we, and that's pretty attractive actually for contractors, is we will give them all six. So when they're bidding on a house, they're not bidding on a house, they're bidding on six houses. So if there are contractors here that are, you know, in line, we'll use them because it's probably convenient, right? But they do, they do have to get competitive, I will tell you that, because that's what helps keep those prices where we need them.
Other questions? All right. Next up, we want to go.
I got one. Is the, what, how do I say this? I'm a little confused. It, it sounds like that you're building 32 homes, or are you building, the agreement is for 32 single-family homes or 32 single-family homes and 124 multifamily units?
Yeah, it's both.
Okay. And together that adds up to 10 million? Is, I, I hope I'm wrong there.
No, no, it's.
It's 20, about 27 million.
But 10 million of it will be done by January 1st of 2026? That's what we're saying in this agreement?
Yep. That's what we're using as a performance metric for them to exercise their option for phase two.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? All right. Let's take a look at the pro forma then?
Yeah. Okay. Adam, you made the trip. Why don't you, why don't you talk about?
Do you want to introduce?
Yeah. So everyone, this is Adam Reichel. You guys often see Justin Fisher. So as of the last year, we've been working equally with Adam as much as we have with Justin. Adam's helped us through this. So Adam, I'll let you go ahead, and he's from RW Barrett, by the way.
Yeah. So I'm Adam Reichel. I used to be similar to Aaron. I was a city administrator for a bunch of years, and now I'm kind of the TIF crisis hotline for Barrett. So when Aaron has questions and concerns about TIF, I'm kind of the guy that comes in and tries to help answer the questions or come up with different ideas and plans. So as Aaron said, we've been working now for probably the last, almost, six months, kind of looking at this plan and kind of looking at different options with the developer. And so what we came up with is kind of the pro forma that is in your packets and information. So I'm just going to kind of go over everything and explain kind of how the numbers are all playing out. So when we do our pro forma, so we're going to start in the green area where it says background data. So you'll see the first yellow box there is kind of the base value. So when we look at a project, we always do a base value of zero, assuming that there isn't anything playing into it, just to try to be as conservative as possible. So as was alluded to, there's the potential here for about $27 million worth of construction increments. So that is B. That's the column that you're seeing there. What we did is based on the information that we got from Tricor, we were able to kind of put that in starting in 2024 and then ending essentially in 2029, where potentially if they did everything that they were proposing, that would equate to about 27.3 million dollars. What we do then is we then look at the, how much increment is being generated over the base, and then that, using the tax rate, that is all of the taxing jurisdictions, so that's your school district, your technical college, the county, and the city all put together, comes up with a tax rate that's right now at $16.86. That then moves us into kind of the blue category here, which is the revenue. So using that tax rate and using the increment that they're potentially looking at generating, we then come up with tax revenue that, as you can see here, starts in about 2026 with about $90,000, and then continues to grow as it reaches then the maximum, starting roughly in about 2031, for about $461,000 a year. That then is what we then looked at going into kind of the kind of beige color or brown or tan, which is the expenditures. What we looked at then is using in the first column essentially how much revenue potentially could be utilized to cover the Pago payment that was being proposed. So the final number that we kind of looked at was using 96% of that revenue in blue to essentially cover the majority of the expenses that are occurring in the tan. And so as you'll see in the development agreement, when you looked at that, that is a maximum amount of $6,762,369. And so essentially, starting in 2026, any revenue that would be coming in, 96% of that would be used to then start offsetting that $6.7 million number. And so what we did then was looked at potentially every year, kind of reducing that number. So as you can see, it starts really in 2026 with about $86,000. Then potentially, there's about 177, kind of goes up to a maximum number of 443. And then lasts till about 2042, where you'll see there is one kind of bulk lump sum payment. That's the 581 to 83. The reason why we're doing that is obviously because we want to make sure all of our expenditures are done before you close the district, and that's kind of the last year. So that's why you're seeing kind of a one-year increase over the other numbers that we have been typically doing every year. So then kind of going over to the last area, which is TID status, when you take in the revenues minus the expenditures, as you can see here, you can see pretty much every year cash flows, except for that one last year. And the only reason that is is because again, we're trying to make sure that we are closing out all the payments that need to be done. So that's why you're seeing that one red number, basically an O. But luckily, because you're not using 100% of the revenue, you're doing 96, you're seeing that there is in column P, accumulative cash balance that is creating. So in that one year that you're in the negative, we are showing that there is going to be revenue essentially in accumulative balance that will cover it. So this project essentially covers all of the costs that need to be done throughout the entire project. Anything else you wanted me to hit on, Aaron, or did I cover?
No, just if there's any questions for Adam from city council members.
So I just want to understand, is the blue column, is that the tax revenue the city could be expecting to receive?
Yes. So what we're showing is essentially, the way this kind of works is it's a projection. So as kind of talked about in the development agreement, because it's a Pago, essentially they have to create the product, and that's going to generate the revenue that you're getting. So going on the assumptions, which is basically in kind of the green, the B, that's what has been presented from Tricor's. That's their goal of trying to hit these targets. So if they do that, based on the tax rate that currently is on the books for 2023, which is 1686, that would then generate what you're seeing then in the blue, which is the revenue. And then that's essentially what's going to be used to make that payment. So as in the development agreement, I think that you guys are looking at is if, you know, they basically are, you know, there's whatever struggles or anything like that, they will get whatever generate, basically, revenue they generate. The goal is obviously, we're going to make sure that we want to see that happen. I think we all, everybody does. But that's kind of how it works, is essentially they'll get 96% of whatever revenue is generated off of that tax increment.
It's that, that money doesn't get, that's the city, it's not school district, it's not?
Correct. So part of the, the reason why you have the ta, the tax increment district is in that 20-year period when you created, all of the revenue that is, that normally would go to the school district, the technical college, the county, is pooled and able to be used by the city to essentially fund these type of projects, which then, as you can see here, when you're talking about a base value of zero and potentially there's 27.3 million, at the end of the day, when that equalized value goes back into all those taxing entities, that's a big bump that they're going to see in their budget. And as it's proposed, you know, that's not the only thing that they're doing, they have a lot more. So there's the potential for that to be even higher.
This is just phase one?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the city get a percentage of the four administrate, administering the TIF?
Yeah, Paul, good question. So you can see that that is related to this specific project. We did budget for that. That's in column M, administrative expenses. So that's showing is about $2,000 a year. So that's taken out before we get to the annual balance on the far right.
Any else?
Two other things that I think are important to note. You heard Adam talk about the 96% Pago. 96%, it'll be 96% of all revenue that they produce in that year. So even though you see specific numbers on here, it'll still, if they undershoot that, it'll only be 96% of those numbers. And I think the other important thing is the development agreement does state that there's a cap of that 6.762 million. And that cap is important because if they overperform, or if the valuations exceed what the, what the projections are, that money will stay with the TIF. So there is a potential for there to be greater money in the TIF in that scenario.
And, and as Corey alluded to too, but I think it's important to say this too, we're, within that entire TID, we are only just talking about just this phase one. You know, there's, there's other properties already in the TID that have made improvements, and hopefully there's additional phases that will go along with this. This is a, this is the starting point. Colin, you had a question?
To go on with what you're saying, in the development agreement, it said if there's TID money available, greater than 96%, what that development agreement is saying is if there's TID increment from other projects in the TID, that money might be used to pay down this debt. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it could. Or in both scenarios. If there is, and if, if the city decides that that's in the best interest of the city in the TID, that is a possibility. Or if this one overperforms and that can go, we can prepay that.
I want to confirm that it would only be money that's generated by this TID and not from some other TID transferred in to pay off this TID.
So as it stands right now, this TID is not a recipient of any TID, so yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Dimitri, go ahead.
Is, is your question, Colin, is that in regard to number 11 on that developers' agreement? About prepaying the developer? Okay. Are there any strings attached to prepaying the developer? Because like I'm thinking of the property in East Badger that we gave over $300,000 and happened.
Yeah. Glad you brought that up, Dimitri. So that money has been committed, but that has not been turned over on that specific project. That is only delivered upon occupancy. So that can't be delivered until that project's finished. But going back to this, no, there are no strings attached to it. It's just if it's deemed in the city's best interest, we can prepay towards that cap, that aforementioned cap. You know, maybe there's a scenario in which we want to close the TID early in the future, maybe, you know, whatever that may be.
Decisions would have to be run before the council?
Absolutely.
Yes. Yeah. And that's where just kind of, as I think as they alluded to, if they obviously are exceeding what has been projected and you have more revenue, then we can provide some kind of, you know, we can provide financial options of what you could do. That potentially could be if you want to use that money for infrastructure or anything else, or just like you said, prepay off the debt. Those are kind of the options we can kind of look at.
Well, and if you remember from previous development agreements that we've had in the past, we've had infrastructure where we've had to come up with that money upfront to put in infrastructure. Well, that's not the case here. Tykor is, is putting in all the infrastructure, and then it's a complete, as he, as Wade had said, is a complete Pago. So we're not putting any money upfront. And they're actually going to be putting in infrastructure before they even have homes that are built.
Along with that, is it, is it correct for me to say that it's, the infrastructure that we're starting out with is going to take 18 years to be paid off through this method? That's, that's what we're getting at?
So because the infrastructure's being taken care of through them, I can't speak to how long. I can speak to back and forth in negotiations. There was a time in which we were looking at maybe having to do infrastructure.
I guess that question was leading to another one. You know, the TID can only be open so long. So if...
So if phase one's infrastructure takes eighteen years to pay off, will phase two take eighteen years? And if so, um, how are we gonna keep doing that at ninety-six percent of the revenue in less time? And, and so that was kind of a, a long-term question of is this sustainable for phase two and phase three, shorter periods of time to try and recoup whatever more developer outlays would have to occur? And perhaps this first outlay is going to help and have, you know, bearing on smaller outlays in the future or not. I don't, I don't really know, but that's sort of what I was wondering.
Want me to take that one?
Go ahead. I, I know Wade and I have, and us have talked about this as well. So, but go ahead.
Yeah. So no, I think you're, you're hitting the question right on the head. So obviously if, you know, the city was taking on that debt and generally when we work with municipalities, you know, that will get structured. You try to do a ten-year timeframe. You don't really like to go longer than that, but a lot of times that's not reality because you can't pay that off. So usually your first kind of phase is where you'll see a ability to fund a larger portion, whether that is. When you kind of get into future years, as they kind of alluded to, you know, the less amount of time you have in the TIF, you kind of have to look at some scenarios. So in order to be able to offer a higher incentive, that may depend on the product then and the assessed values that they're bringing in. So those are all the things that kind of play into it when you look at it. So certainly, yeah, when you get into kind of the phase two and phase three conversations, um, those are all the things that we kind of go back and forth and model and look at. Does it, is it in the best interest of the city to take on additional debt, you know? The general rule of thumb is the longer TIF is in existence, the less debt you really want to take on. So having the ability to work with a developer that is open to Pago, as the mayor alluded to, um, is a benefit. Because then it gives a lot more protection for the city and gives you the ability to kind of consider giving higher incentives than you would if you had to take on the infrastructure yourself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Any other questions? If you may, you guys, go back to page fifty-five of your packet then. This is where we have the development agreement listed there. Aaron, anything or Wade, anything on, on the development agreement that, uh, you guys want to spell out? I mean, it was in your packet last weekend. I had a chance to look at it. Anybody have any questions on, on the development agreement itself?
Mayor, as far as I'm concerned, I think we've touched on every substantial item on it throughout that pro forma conversation.
So what staff is asking tonight and the mayor are asking that, uh, we approve this development agreement with Tykor to begin the phase one River North project.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Martin, second by Hagan, that we approve the development agreement between the city of Opaaca and Tykor Built LLC for the phase one of the River North project. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Adam, thank you very much for coming up tonight. Wade, Alex, we're looking forward to working with you guys.
You guys.
Yeah. Have a great night. Safe drive for all of you guys. All right, uh, next up.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a. Next up under new business, we have payroll services agreement between the city of Opaaca and the Opaaca area fire district. I'm going to turn it over to Aaron, but I do want to just keep reminding you that, um, it, uh, this is the year twenty twenty-four where we're, uh, in position to hire a full-time fire chief position. And, uh, the, the plan is to have somebody in place by July first of this year, and this goes along with the, so I just wanted to bring that up. Aaron, you want to just talk about the agreement then?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, city council members on page sixty-seven of your packet, you'll see a memo that explains, uh, the proposed action tonight. Little background, as Mayor just said, uh, in two thousand twenty-four budget planning process, the Opaaca area fire district did approve a budget that included a full-time fire chief position. Uh, the way that the, uh, agreement is written, it, it actually, um, the city of Opaaca was able to also plan for our budget in accordance with their budget with pretty minimal impacts. I think it was under two thousand dollars and still able to get that uh, full-time fire chief in there. So on January twenty-third, uh, we, the Opaaca area fire district did have a meeting. And the commission voted to approve the attached document, uh, which we're looking to, or asking for approval for tonight. Basically, it just makes the fire chief position, uh, able to, uh, fall under city payroll services. In looking at recruiting for that position, it only made sense to have that person have, um, have that eventual person have, uh, city benefits or similar city benefit package. So, uh, in looking at our budget, working with the commission, it was kind of agreed upon that this is the route we would go. It has very, very minimal impact, uh, on like an administrative standpoint from our finance department. So this is just an agreement that would allow this position eventually, when it is hired, to fall within our payroll services. All of, of course, all the expenses, uh, would be covered by the district. So no additional expenses for the city of Opaaca. I think I've also approved, uh, just for your information on the overall process, also approved the fire chief job description and then projected recruitment hiring schedule for your information. Okay. Any questions?
All right.
We're doing the service of making paying them. Who sets the salary for the chief?
The, the fire district sets it during their annual budget, which we have represented. The city has representation on that commission as well as the four surrounding townships. So ultimately you do have that approval. Any other questions? Again, uh, so this is, we're really treating the, the fire district is actually really treating the city as a third-party payroll service to make sure that we get the full benefits that we think will attract a, a good person for this position. So we're looking for a, a motion to approve this agreement.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Nagel, second by Peterson, that we approve, uh, payroll service agreement between the city of Opaaca and the Opaaca area fire district. Any discussion? Go ahead, Paul.
And where it says that the fire district will reimburse the entire cost of employment of the fire chief does, or is the city getting any, um, compensation for the additional expense of the additional employee and the record-keeping and staff time, that sort of thing? Is that just gratis?
Uh, it's gratis. We to be, and I actually did have a conversation with both of our staff and our payroll, uh, and finance department, Steph and Kate. Ultimately, it's just another click of the button every two weeks.
Okay.
So not a lot.
All right. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Barbara, call the roll.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, uh, Grand National Lounge, one oh six Union Street is, uh, requesting to expand their premises. Barb, you're the name on this, so let us know what's going on here.
All right, uh, Jamie and Mike from the Grand National Lounge would like to, um, expand their premise to the yellow, um, area on the map. It's just right behind the, um, current, um, bar area. And, um, it would have to be inspected by the, or approved, I should say, by the fire chief building inspector and, um, the police department. And I have talked to all of them and they are looking at it. They are all okay with it. There is going to be cameras from the bar into that area. And there's also going to be extra, um, wait staff dedicated to that, um, area. So it's going to be, um, staffed with a operator at all times. So they're just looking to expand into that area for small parties or overflow from the bar. That's it.
So you've heard the request. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Porczatsky, that we grant the, uh, premise expansion for Grand National Lounge at one oh six Union Street. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, uh, next up, ATC substation and water extension agreement. Mr. Barron's.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so this one starts on page seventy-seven, goes on to eighty-one of the packet. Um, so this is looking for an agreement, uh, between the city and ATC or American Transmission Company. We actually talked about this at our utility board meeting earlier today, uh, as an agreement to extend a water line in a hydrant. So with ATC, uh, went through a, uh, site plan review process not too long ago. They made some improvements to their substation, uh, just off of highway forty-nine. Uh, with that, the fire department, uh, and the chief had, uh, reviewed the plan and, um, if you could scroll down here into the exhibit, I think that would greatly help. Um, and has required that a hydrant be placed closer to that substation. So that's our, our, uh, water system there in the blue. Uh, the red dots are hydrants and the yellow would be uh, where we would extend a main and include a hydrant. Uh, since this falls underneath like the development process, um, ATC would pay for all this. So that's basically what the de, the details of the agreement say is we will design it. Uh, we will hire a contractor, we will build it, and then, uh, we will get reimbursed for all those expenses. So this agreement again was reviewed by sewer water, uh, board this afternoon. It was, uh, also reviewed by our eternity, our attorney, excuse me, and everything seems to be on the up and up here. So I guess with that, this was, uh, recommended by the water and sewer board for, uh, approval by council tonight.
Thanks, Justin. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve, uh, entering into an agreement with American Transmission Company for construction reimbursement of a water main extension and fire hydrant installation. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Uh, next up, uh, what did you have, like twelve items on here? So you just cut them in half?
Three.
Okay. Uh, next up, street department ten-year dump truck replacement. Mr. Barron's.
Let's talk trucks, Mayor.
Yeah, let's do trucks.
All right, this one is, uh, page eighty-two through ninety. This is through our street department. Our ten-year dump truck, uh, truck one seventeen. It's a nineteen ninety-nine International with just a little over a hundred eighty-six thousand miles on it. Uh, we consider this our haul truck because it hauls material, whether gravel in or, uh, soil out or snow out. It's basically what it is used for. It's definitely showing its age and it's on our replacement plan, uh, to replace. We budgeted a hundred fifty-five thousand this year to replace it with a lightly-used truck. Uh, so John Bartle, our street mechanic, and Roger Hanson, our street superintendent, have been scouring, uh, I guess the internet, making some phone calls to find a piece of equipment that would work for us. The table there is a summary of comparable tr, trucks that we think would be good fits or replace it. The one at the very top was one they really wanted. As you can see, it was a, a twenty twenty-one with a hundred thousand miles on it, uh, within budget, but it did not last very long. Uh, the other trucks, the next three, um, have significantly higher mileage and well out of our price range. And then finally, the bottom one, uh, this freight liner in Minnesota, uh, it's a twenty twenty. It has just a little over one thousand miles on it, um, and it is priced at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So we have a hold on this truck, uh, until tomorrow. So of course, looking for approval tonight. One caveat, it is three thousand dollars over our budget. But looking at what our comparables are out there, I think you'll agree that this one is by far the best value with just a thousand miles on it. I guess what I am suggesting is this approval, obviously, to go over budget by three thousand. Uh, but to make that up, uh, with the savings we found in our, uh, road project, um, that I talked about about a month ago. So attached behind it is the specifications and an agreement for this truck, along with pictures of this truck that's up in Minnesota and of course, our existing truck, uh, the beautiful Omaha orange at the very bottom, um, there as well. So I'll open it up to any questions. Eric.
Isn't there value in the old truck? Are you keeping that or are you selling that?
We're selling it. Uh, we will put it on Wisconsin surplus once we get this new truck in. Uh, we'd expect to get somewhere in the area of like fifteen to maybe twenty-five thousand for it.
So wouldn't that make up the difference that you're going over?
So, uh, Aaron.
Good question.
Maybe Aaron can explain how that works with trade-ins? Okay, so it doesn't work exactly the way you and I would do it, of course. So if, Aaron, if you could just explain that.
Yeah, so Eric and council members, when we do sell that, it goes into an equipment replacement fund. Uh, that equipment replacement fund is reviewed every year when it comes to capital budget time. And if, uh, this year, actually, when we put together our capital budget and our plan to borrow, we bought down our borrow with some of the money that was from sales from years, uh, past. So indirectly, maybe, yeah, but that's how it works.
Yeah. Go ahead, Scott.
Justin, I was going to ask you, I forgot to ask today, is there going to be any kind of transportation costs to get this truck here if you have to have it hauled here or are we? Is that going to accumulate a lot of money, I guess? I don't know if you thought about that.
We could pay for it to have it hauled here. It would be well over a grand.
Yes.
I guess what we're assuming is just have two guys drive up there with a pickup.
That was my point, because I, I've heard it can be well over a grand and that adds on to the three. So it might be a little cheaper pending guys.
Right.
Where Rice, Minnesota is.
Right, it's, it's a full days.
Okay.
Full day driving for two guys, but in this case, we think it's worth it.
Okay. Good enough.
All right, anybody else?
I'll move to approve the purchase of the freight liner, uh, twenty twenty for, uh, one fifty-eight thousand.
Motion by Martin, second by Olson, that we approve the purchase of this vehicle. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
This truck is obviously so much better deal than the other ones. Is there, is there, does it have less equipment? How does it compare to the other ones? And is, is there a reason it's so much less money than the other ones?
Other than the dealers trying to get rid of it, the only main thing I could point to is the Peterbilt is a, is a quad axle, which means a little beefier of a chassis or a chassis, excuse me. Uh, the other ones are really similar. We just think this is a really good deal. It's, they're very similar, uh, comparisons.
Okay, any other questions?
I got one quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What would a brand new one cost? Just accuracy.
We would, we'd expect that to tip the scales around two hundred thousand, maybe. one seventy-five.
Okay. Ready to vote? Barbara Colerole?
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczowski.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask another question?
Nope, too late. Yeah, go ahead.
Please. Um, did we, did we look at the history of this truck as to why it's being sold with only a thousand miles? Is it defective of some, I mean, did we look into the history of it, why it's sitting there at a thousand miles, being sold as used?
Yeah, the, the guys did. They looked into it. It just was very lightly-used. It was supposed to be a haul truck for a private company. They barely used it and now they're just selling it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. You changing your vote or is it okay?
No, I think I'll stick with our math.
All right, okay. Uh, next up, you're still up, Justin.
Right, talking more trucks. So this next one, ninety-one through ninety-six, this is a standard three-quarter pickup truck in the water utility. This one was discussed this afternoon at the Water and Sewer Utility Board, but I will give you the background again. So this is replacing truck two ninety-one. It's a two thousand nine Ford pickup. This is the oldest pickup truck in our fleet and of course, is thus identified as being on a replacement program for twenty twenty-four. Went through very similar process, sought pricing on a new pickup. I have a table there outlining where the numbers have fallen. I'd like to direct, the very far right column is Ewald Ford. That's a factory order. Now that would be if we ordered a brand new, brand new one through the state purchasing cooperative agreement. We could get a brand-new truck here for that forty-seven thousand dollars in six months. What we did find, though, is Neville Motors here right in town could find us a GMC for just shy of that. So I see this as a win-win. We're supporting the local business and we're coming in under that cooperative purchasing agreement. So to me, it seems like a no-brainer. Again, it was reviewed by the utility board and recommended that council approve this. And the specs are included, along with pictures of the brand-new truck. It's a twenty-twenty-four GMC Sierra. And on this action, if you could please note that the funding is through water revenue bonds.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Peterson, second by Dykstra, that we approve of the purchase of this new pickup truck for the water department. It's a twenty-twenty-four three-quarter ton GMC Sierra pickup truck for an amount of forty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczowski.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Justin. Uh, next up, we have operator's license. We have two individuals on there. This is for bartender's license, of course. We need a motion to approve the license report number sixteen fifty-nine.
Move to approve.
Did I miss him? I'll do that. Thank you. Motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve license report number sixteen fifty-nine. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. FYI, number seven there, Barb is correcting me, of course. We don't need to vote on this, but as almost always in April, the first meeting that we have in April will not be held on Tuesday, April second, because that's an election day. So the meeting, according to our ordinances, then would be held the day after that. So it would be on Wednesday, April third, again, same time, six o'clock. All right, thank you, Barb, for reminding me. Uh, next up, license report number sixteen sixty. This is a license report for taxi cab drivers. We have one person on there. We need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Olson, second by Hagan, that we approve license report sixteen sixty. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, back to unfinished business here then. We have ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. This is an ordinance amending chapter fourteenth of the building code. Remember that this is the second reading, even though we had a meeting in between. And I'm going to turn it over to Jared.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, ordinance number fourteen twenty-three starts on page ninety-nine of your packets. Uh, this is the second reading. It was brought forward two councils ago, postponed last council, as there were some concerns brought up by some council, of the council members. After reviewing those comments, as well as some of the comments that had came in from a public input standpoint, staff believes this ordinance is still the most effective route in accomplishing what we're looking to accomplish with this, and that is creating an ordinance that will assist in ensuring buildings, structures, multifamily, single-family, two-family, that are in the city are quality housing and are meant for human occupancy, that they should be livable, decent, safe, and sanitary. And this is looking at a variety of options or of, of elements in a home. So happy to walk through them one by one. Otherwise, like I had mentioned, this is minimum occupancy standards. And staff believes this is the best route and most effective route in accomplishing, actually, a strategic plan that was outlined or adopted by the Wapaka City Council, and that is to maintain and improve accountability with existing property owners and absentee landlords for blighted properties. So again, you know, from a staff perspective and looking at that strategic plan, you know, looking at quality of housing in the city, looking to ensure that people want to stay in Wapaka and also move to Wapaka, not just to the new homes that we may build, but also our existing housing stock.
Thanks, Jared. Comments, questions?
Happy to take any comments, questions.
Uh, Jared, I did have a call today from an individual that deals in property and buying, selling, and owning. And he was kind of concerned a little bit about, are we going to go out and, you know, knock on everybody's door and check things? Who's going to enforce, I can, who's going to enforce it? And, and will it be hyper-enforced, I guess, you know, to the detriment, maybe of somebody that only has one outlet in their bedroom and you're supposed to have two, you know? But can you, can you tell me anything about that?
Yeah, I can touch on a few points. So one main thing to point out, this is not a retroactive code, similar to any of other codes. Once you see that they're adopted, you'll see, usually see a ordinance number and date that it was adopted, and that is the effective published date that all ordinances will have. So it's not going to be retroactive. It can't really go back and force a nineteen twenties home to, you know, add electrical. Now, if they were looking to redo that bedroom, like they were tearing it all the way down to the studs, at that point, building code would take over anyways and they would be forced to add that electrical. So that's one thing. And then in terms of the knocking on individuals' doors, being hyperac- hyperactive with this ordinance, unless we get a multitude of additional staff, it, it would not be physically possible for us to do that. This is really meant to ensure that we're, we're picking up on those really bad properties, you know, and we have a means to do something about them. Right now, we have nothing, no means of doing that. There's not a whole lot we can direct them to. You know, we do have programs that we've, we've done through ARPA dollars. We've reinvested half a million, but that half a million went away really, really, really quick. And projects are expensive. So, you know, those people that were looking to do those projects, you know, they use that money to the best of their ability. But now we're out of funds. So, yes, but to answer, yes, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I think so. I kind of told them, we, we're, our staffing here is, you know, we're not looking to, you know, headhunt anybody. We're going to be flexible and work with people. So I, I think, you know, he understood.
Yes, and I, and I would say too, you know, to a point, if, similar to any other code compliance issue, you know, we have, if there was an abuse occurring.
Yeah.
At the staff level, you guys would for sure hear about it. And there would be repercussions for whatever staff member's doing that. So, you know, you guys are governing us and keeping us in line. We're, we're just the kids.
All right. Sounds good.
Dave, go ahead.
Probably the same person. I, I just got to open my emails up tonight and there was one from one o'clock this afternoon from somebody that wanted to comment or get more discussion going. I just wondered if.
Yeah.
Are we talking the same person and?
Well, I, yeah, I, I'm sure.
Doesn't matter.
I told him, I said, sent some emails.
You didn't see the email or?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
I just don't, anybody?
I'm guessing it's the same person.
Yes, I'm sure it is. I just, yeah, I, I kind of assured him, you know, that I don't think we're, I can speak to something he said to me, you know, privately later on, but about, you know, he was worried about, you know, things that were, we didn't want to be overly. Like I said, overly diligent, but yet be diligent, so.
How do you find, how do you find that not discriminatory then?
Colin.
Like I'm gonna?
Colin, hold on.
No, no.
Give, give him the opportunity to finish and.
Oh, I thought he was done.
If you want to talk, then raise your hand, please.
No, I just, I said I'd bring the points up and ask questions and I'm done now, so.
Okay, thank you. Colin?
Sure. The counterpoint to that is, if, if you're not going to enforce the code equally on everybody, isn't that a discriminatory practice?
I didn't.
Who are you? Hold on a second. No, we're not going to get into, to debate between two council people. That was Scott's, that was Scott's opinion.
All right, I'll ask Jared. If you're not going to effectively apply this code to everybody, wouldn't that be a discriminatory practice?
I would say no. You can go to any community. You can look at our current zoning code now, you know, code compliance, zoning code standards. You know, there's no way that we can have eyes in the sky and, you know, focus on everybody at the same time. You know, it has to be taken in a step at a time as things come up. You know, we do prioritize as well. If there is a situation where, you know, again, maybe there's a hell, a serious safety standard, you know, happening at one property and there's something really less critical in another, we have to prioritize our staff time, deal with the immediate safety concern first. You know, the more immediate, the more dangerous, more hazardous, and then we can come back to those. So it, we, we can't catch all of them. We don't currently with all of our codes we have. You know, and that, you know, not going to, not going to throw everyone under the bus, but, you know, you could even look towards like the police department or, you know, policing codes, and there's no way that they can enforce all of them. So there's just no way for any department to do it all.
Other comments? Don, are you done?
No, I've got a lot of comments on this one. This code is taken from Shawno, from the pages of Shawno. Today I was, I had the opportunity to speak with the woman there who, who actually enforces this code. And one of the most telling things she said is a lot of times, I feel like I'm the landlord. And being a landlord since nineteen ninety-nine, I can tell you that these things blow up. You don't know when they're going to blow up. And you're going to have a problem and it's going to be on somebody's like number one priority. And for the city to want to get in between a landlord and a tenant and try and be a go-between for that sort of problem that you're depicting in this code, I think is a huge mistake and is going to take a lot of city resources at unpredictable times. And I, I don't think this is the right way to go. If you've got problems at a property, there's certain ordinances other people have instituted at nuisance properties, et cetera. Our landlords, I think, do a good job in this city and we don't need to be a landlord for our landlords. And so I'm, I'm completely opposed to this, this, this code. Furthermore, when you look through their, their housing code from, it's chapter sixteen in the Shawno code, they include definitions for many of the words that are used in this code that we've, we've taken. And we do not define them. The one that I have the biggest question with is habitable room. I think we should revise this and make sure that we include the definitions of the new words that are in this code that aren't any other codes that we have, so that it's clear to people if we happen to pass, I hope we don't, I hope we just say, you know, we don't need to police our landlords and we don't need to have city staff be the landlords of the landlords. So anyway, and if we happen to want to go that route, I think, number one, you should take a harder look at what they did in chapter sixteen of Shawno's code. Make sure you have definitions. And then there's a couple of other minor things that, that I would move to, to follow closely, closer to, to their code, because ours is rewritten in, in such a way I don't think is exactly appropriate. But anyway, that's my comment for now.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
I got, I got a comment, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just saw the word reasonable in there several times. And I guess reasonable can be one of those words that was going to decide what's reasonable and not reasonable. But I, I saw it probably, you know, maybe three or four times. That was the only thing that popped out at me. But I, I think this is a good idea. Maybe this isn't the exact way we want to go, because there's obviously things being said here. But I, I like the idea. I think it protects some people. I've got a place right across from my house that I've, I've been told is a terrible repair and the landlord did nothing. And so they finally just had to move out. And this is a protection for them, right?
Are you asking Jared?
Yeah.
Yes, that, that is the intent. It's intended for a protection of the landlord, landlords, the tenants, you know, it, it's, it's all around ensuring that the, the quality housing is there and that we, again, keep those individuals in our community as residents and as happy residents, you know, living in a quality place and not looking to move outside because we don't have the housing stock or additional resources to help them.
Go ahead, Dimitri.
After the first reading, I also spoke with Jared about the, the phrase habitable room, because the way is, if you don't understand what that means, a lot of these things seem very unreasonable that you would have these requirements for every room in a house. But habitable room is actually a bedroom. And so when you look at it that way, some of these things are a little bit more reasonable. So I, I would also echo that I think the terms need to be defined, or you're just going to get, you're going to have to explain it down the road anyway, and you're going to have to field more complaints from people who don't understand and they're objecting.
Sure, and, and certainly something we can do. The reasoning we didn't is just because that is a definition in the UDC Housing Code that we do adopt. So that's why we didn't include it in there, but it is something we surely can do if the council feels, you know, adding definitions for any of those words in the section would be helpful. We can certainly do that.
Other questions? Again, as I said before, this is the second reading of this. So the options are here to recommend approval. Or you could table it. I'm just giving you options here, of course. Those are your two options, really. Yeah, go ahead.
So Jared, just kind of looking at the ordinance here, are we having a lot of issues that you've, that staff felt that we needed an ordinance like this?
So we did have requests from different entities or different people throughout the community. So a couple of times, this topic of conversation has come up in our downtown partnership meeting, which discusses, you know, all of our, with our, is a discussion with all of our downtown businesses that are on Main Street and just off. is a discussion with all of our downtown businesses, um, that are on Main Street and just off, about our downtown area and directly adjacent, uh, so all of the housing there. So, um, many of these concerns came up, um, during one of those meetings or a couple of those meetings. A couple of these concerns were brought up by the, uh, police department with a few of the homes that they're dealing with, um, and the living standards that are there. As well as our building inspector has had numerous calls, um, and I have had numerous calls from tenants. But our building inspector has had numerous calls from not only tenants, um, but just other neighbors of property owners, uh, commenting on the quality of the homes next to them. Um, so after a variety of those comments had come in, you know, our building inspector had brought up, you know, the night, this idea of this, this sort of code. You know, we looked into it. Uh, we did take a look at Shawno's, um, felt as though theirs was worded to the satisfaction that we were looking for, um, and went forward with that. So, um, it, it did stem from comments throughout the community, things we were noticing the staff, as, as well as other groups that we, we discussed with, so.
Oh, go ahead.
So you're saying that this is not retroactive, so really, the, the complaints and comments that you got and issues, if this is not retroactive, then they would not effectively address the situations that you're speaking of? Is that correct?
And we were, we were discussing the whole retroactive, uh, situation before this meeting. You know, it, it is, there's, it's, there's different situations in which it can be handled differently. Um, you know, the, the one I mentioned, so, for example, a, a good, uh, or a good, uh, example of, uh, B one on page one hundred for the window area. So it talked about how you need to have a certain percentage of window area, not only for natural light ventilation, but also egress, uh, ingress. So the example of this would be if, you know, how it's not retroactive. So say, somebody was living in a home, there is a bedroom. They've been using this room as a bedroom for the last hundred years, you know, but there is no window in it. They're gonna continue using it as a bedroom. We're not gonna force them to not use it as a bedroom. You know, we're not gonna go in and enforce that. Now, say this bedroom had two windows, they both broke and the, let's say landlord to make it easy, landlord went and just boarded up with some OSB, called it a day. At that point, we would go in, you know, and say that happens, we pass it tonight and it happens a week from now. We would go in and we would say, hey, unfortunately you cannot just board up these windows. They need to be replaced. Please replace them within a certain period of time. If they come to us and say, hey, I have a contractor, he's coming in or she's coming in, um, you know, in three weeks, we'd say, okay, sounds good. Please just give us an update, um, and we'll continue working with you. So it's not retroactive in a way. We, we can't go back and we can't, you know, just force them to do stuff. We can't force them to add a window or use a, um, or add a electrical box in a room if there's only one, you know, we, we can't do that. Now, like I had mentioned to Scott, um, if they are gonna redo the bedroom, at that point, the building code would take over and they would be, need to add, you know, they're gonna redo a room into a bedroom. So say it was normal, it was actually a sewing room and now they're actually gonna make it into a full bedroom, they will need to meet the standards of the overall state building code. So it wouldn't even apply to that. It would, another code would take over for that. If that answers your question.
Are there county codes that also apply to this, these situations or no?
No, so it, from what I have researched, it's really up to the local government to, uh, take an initiative, initiative and do this. So we've mentioned Shawno, uh, has a code. I believe Keel has a code. I just talked with Oshkosh, uh, about their code that they've adopted for the building occupancy standard. Stevens Point has a code. Uh, so it's really up to the communities to handle. Um, there is the Health and Human Services, which we have discussed. Um, and we were working with them on a home that's, is in pretty significant disrepair, uh, but there was only so much they can do. Uh, they do take over, like if there's more mold issues or if there's a child living in the house, they can do a little more. But overall, it would really be up to the city, uh, to focus their, you know, any efforts that would be desired on those properties.
Let me go to Dave.
Colin, I've been thinking, what you mentioned about that, is it the building inspector that's going to do the enforcing of this for us?
Yep, yep. Building inspector would be the, the best one because he's trained in the, or they are trained in the commercial building code or residential and commercial building code.
There should be enough time in the day to do it, by the way we're talking here. Anyway, retroactive, you can't go to anyplace. So it's gotta be either something just broke tomorrow or a new build.
Yep, so.
Every house in the city.
Yeah, so there would be situations where we couldn't handle yet and that's just, that's just the way that it generally is, um, with all codes. So our hands are a little bit tied, but we're hoping, again, this gives us something to use in the future, um, when these things do happen.
I can understand the idea and I think I like it, but maybe more discussion. I don't need to beat it to death, but I'm not sure of that.
So as far as the retroactive thing, I don't see anything in the language that I would be voting on that says that this is not retroactive. So that concerns me that it's not in this language somewhere. The other thing that concerns me is while you might not be able to make a landlord go in and put a second outlet in a bedroom that only has one outlet, according to this, you can make that landlord not be able to rent out that property.
So if, if they went in and they created a bedroom, um, you know, with no outlets or no windows.
I'm not talking about creating, cause then they have to follow building code. I'm saying an existing property. And the tenant comes in and says, hey, there's this ordinance now that's, I'm supposed to have two outlets in my bedroom or my landlord can't rent the property to me.
Sure, and, and.
How do you deal with that?
Yeah, so.
According to this, that person needs to get kicked out of, out of the place and the landlord can't rent to him.
So hypothetically, if the landlord would, uh, take a sewing room that would have no outlets, you know, the sew, the sewing machine's electric, battery. Bad example, but it has no windows and they decide they're gonna put a bed in that and they're gonna call it a, a, a fourth bedroom. So to be able to rent it out more, you know, four occupants instead of three. That would not be, we'd come in and we'd say, hey, you cannot do that. For occupancy standards, this cannot be a habitable room bedroom. You know, it needs to meet these code requirements in order for it to be an official bedroom.
I don't know. I mean, we have a shortage of housing as it is. It seems a little, some of these things I certainly think make a lot of sense for health and safety and I'm all for multiple outlets just for fire hazard reasons. Cause I've seen tenants run eight different things to one outlet because there is only one outlet in the room. So I get that, but, um, I, I just think some of this is over the top. The outlet thing, uh, the window thing doesn't explicitly, uh, state in the scenario that you gave with the boarded up. It just leaves it pretty wide open. So there's a lot of gray area for how this could be interpreted and enforced. And that, to me, is, is something that I'm not really comfortable with.
Go ahead.
Is, is, uh, is staff considering, uh, bringing to council, uh, ordinance related to, uh, uh, chronic nuisance properties?
Yes, um, I had sent that in the email to you about, uh, so chronic nuisance ordinances, it, it's kind of the, really the next step after this. So we have a, a line of tools that we can use to enforce problems within the city. So it might be the zoning code, might be the, you know, general construction building code. It might be Department of Public Works code. It might be the police, you know, statutes and code. And if this was passed, it would also be the building maintenance code. So you have these upper bubbles, which are all tools that we can use. And once so many of those tools are engaged for a property, then the chronic nuisance ordinance would kick in in which would allow us to charge time, efforts, things back into or back to that property. You know, so hypothetically, if the PD is called to a property four times a week, you know, for the next two months, be a pretty really simple one to say this is a chronic nuisance ordinance. We're here spending a lot of staff time, taxpayer dollars. You know, because of this, it's a rental property, we will be charging the landlord back this time and effort that we're putting into it to, you know, have officers there. You know, equipment that we're using there, et cetera. So it's kind of the next step, um, in the process. Um, and I had explored that with Chief Ozell, uh, and, um, Captain Benchball? Captain, Captain Benchball, um, about, you know, having that as the next step. So they had took a look through this building maintenance, um, you know, had agreed this is something that they are looking for, um, to have or looking forward to have, uh, and to be able to be utilized. And then the chronic nuisance ordinance would be the next step to work on with them. And I believe Chief Ozell had actually already, uh, drafted a, a kind of mock chronic nuisance ordinance that we could look at.
Mayor?
Yeah? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure if the council will go for this, but, um, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, table this, uh, second reading until our March fifth meeting for the purposes of individual discussion and further research.
Yeah, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Martin, that we table this. I think we can do this legally. Go a month out. Yeah, we can pick any date, right? So, yeah, we would be going to our, what did you say? Our March?
Fifth meeting.
Our March fifth meeting?
Next two regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second to table this and bring to our March meeting. Any further discussion?
I would just encourage, uh, voting yes for this because, uh, it might be able to further refine and, and define some of the, the questions that I've heard and that I'd like to ask, so.
Okay, so I've been reluctant to say anything, but I wanna, I, I'm under discussion here. I wanna make sure that we understand this. Be careful throwing the baby out with the bath wash here, because if you look at what it says, it says all buildings intended for human occupancy or use shall be kept in livable, decent, safe and sanitary condition. This includes electrical, plumbing and heating systems, as well as all exits and so on and so forth. And then it talks about the minimum standards, having a kitchen sink that works, having a bathroom that has a door on it. So the person can go in there and, and go to the bathroom on their own or take a shower on their own. I mean, there's some good things in here. So, I mean, I, you might not like everything that's in here, but I, please, be, take a good look at it and, and you have time to do this. And I have to tell you this, every one of you in here, including those of you that are on city planning condition, shame on you. Shame on you for this coming to this point now, right now. Why did you not read this? Why did you not get a full understanding of what this ordinance meant? Why do we have to have this discussion right now without having the ability to get some answers for you tonight? So with that, anybody else? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, say no?
No.
No.
Oh.
Sorry, I gotta take, let's take a roll call here. Sorry. Alright, so yes, you're tabling it, no, you're not tabling it. Okay, go ahead.
Eric Olson?
No.
Corey Nagel?
No.
Dimitri Martin?
Yes.
Paul Mayo?
No.
Dave Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Porczatsky?
No.
Paul Hagan?
Yes.
Colin Dextrow?
Yes.
Four yeses and four no's.
There really eight people here in here?
Pressure.
I'll tell you what I'll do. Just to, sorry, you guys had a chance to think too. I didn't think I, I was gonna have to vote here tonight. I don't think we're gonna be successful in getting any more information out of tonight's meeting, so I've decided not to vote. And so it will, no, I'll vote, I'll vote yes. I'm sorry. I'm gonna vote yes. So it will be tabled till the March meeting. Okay, and, and my reason is, is that I believe that we've gotten everything we can out of this tonight and we, this, this, uh, ordinance is still on the, on the floor for our discussion. Okay? Well, let's go that way. Alright. Okay, let's move on. Uh, we have, uh, communications recommendations of the mayor. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, we have another, uh, unfinished business. We have ordinance number fifteen dash, thanks. Twenty twenty-three, it's an ordinance amending section three point zero five of the municipal code relating to purchases, appropriations and payroll. And this is also the second reading.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Um, and thank you, council members. This is on page one oh eight. This has been also talked about a couple of different times and, uh, came back, uh, the second time as a different version than it did the first. We are, uh, asking basically to make some very, very minor changes to our, uh, purchases, appropriations and payrolls ordinance. It would basically allow, you can see it on the screen right now, allow city council by a majority vote to waive their, to, uh, waive the requirement of, uh, sealed bid process, uh, for extenuating circumstances. And it's, it's basically, it's just providing a protection. We brought this forward originally, uh, to potentially bump that threshold up from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars for any non-public construction projects, including pickup trucks, dump trucks. We talked about some tonight. And then after some discussion, after some input and feedback, after a further conversation with Attorney Sorensen and Mayor Smith, we felt comfortable, uh, as staff, myself in, in particular, as bringing it back just with those protections to, to make sure city council could in different circumstances, um, waive that requirement if need be, rather than, uh, just say, hey, we're not gonna do a sealed bid process for, for anything in between, uh, twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand if it's a non-public construction. So I think the question was asked by Councilmember Nagel last time. If staff was comfortable with this version of the ordinance, I can say yes. We are and, and would be recommending approval. I am happy also to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, comments, understand this ordinance? We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Nagel, that we approve of ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. This is an ordinance amending section three point zero five of the municipal code relating to purchases, appropriations and payroll. Discussion. Barbara, call the roll.
Colin Dextrow?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Need aye? Is motion carried?
Alright, am I missing anything now? Alright, under, uh, communications and recommendations of the mayor, the only thing I wanna remind you of is that we do have a committee in the whole meeting after this meeting. We're gonna take like, uh, ten minutes? Ten enough? Ten minute break. Uh, department heads, uh, you are excused for the night. Uh, thank you. So, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we, uh, adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is, uh, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. You guys, you guys, come on, let me finish up here. Twenty twenty-four, subject to call. All in favor? 2024, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:51 PM. Eight o'clock, we'll get back in.